June 17th is the Jobs, Business Growth and Tax Reform Committee. I'm Councilman Smith, Chairman, and I will be it today because there's nobody else around in the building today, so, and I imagine there's some people's-
We go here, Laker fan, though.
I'm a Laker, I'm gonna go change immediately as soon as we're done here, and I presume a lot of you will too, so, we'll move this along rather quickly, I presume, plus there's not gonna be a lot of questions. Hey.
I'm just gonna start the button.
Okay, start the button. We did.
We started.
I need to start again? (mumbling) Okay, good. All right, back on record then, it's Wednesday, June 17th, Councilman Smith, Chairman of the Jobs, Business Growth, Tax Reform Committee, and we'll begin with the only item today, item number one.
This, we promised you, Mr. Chair-
One second, time out.
Okay.
You'll get your camera.
Item number one is Community Development Department Workforce Investment Board and CIO reports relative to the Workforce Investment Board, Year 10 Annual Plan, July 1st, 2009 through June 30, 2010, to provide employment services to businesses and job seekers. This item is also referred to the Ad Hoc Committee on Economic Recovery and Reinvestment.
Now-
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've got a document before you, a couple hundred pages, it makes for good reading-
It does.
Late at night. Basically, it sets out a strategy for the expenditure of 90-plus million dollars of Workforce Investment Act funds. A portion of those funds come to us in the form of formula grants from the federal government via the state. A portion of those funds of that 90-some million dollars, of course, is the recovery funds that the President sent to us. We've developed a plan. The Workforce Investment Board oversaw a number of community meetings and different committee sessions to develop this plan, together with the Community Development Department. The plan before you today calls for sticking to our strategies, and we, of course, identified those industries that have the greatest likelihood of creating jobs in the future, and how we can actually prepare our workforce for those jobs. Again, we dealt with those strategies, we kept our money within a system that we've been building for years with nonprofits, work source centers, which are adult employment centers, OneSource centers, which are youth employment centers. We also have an investment in sector initiatives or special programming where we found that jobs were abundant, but we didn't have a workforce to meet those needs, particularly in the healthcare industry and logistics industry. Again, we vetted this to the public, we think it's a great plan, we have specific metrics for how we're gonna perform that we'll actually report to the Mayor and the City Council, and Robert Seitz can go into the specifics of the plan.
Good morning, Robert Seitz, Assistant General Manager, CDD. Well, the downside of the economy, we all know, the double-digit unemployment, the growth of some severe trends in not just populations that have been severely unemployed for a long time. Here comes Larry.
There we go.
But what we do have right now is hitting our general, our working middle-class areas significantly hard. It's also hitting populations like seniors, folks 55 and older, and it's hitting that bottom edge of our group, folks entering into the system. So what we did for this year is really take a number of the recommendations that you actually passed in your committee about a year ago out of the Jobs Committee, about working with the Community College District, working with adult ed, and really have strengthened our partnerships with them. Unfortunately, they weren't able to make it this morning, but they are gonna be in attendance on Friday to talk about some of our joint programming. But our real focus is to, and strategies, is to go after those target populations that are hit the most severe by this economic downturn. The good news is, is that we were able to get additional dollars through the stimulus plan for our system, and as you know, and been a big supporter of our system, we have taken about a 40% reduction in our funding over the last six years. And through a lot of hard work by everybody, we've been able to maintain our system and really experience a growth in what we've been doing, even with the reduction in the past years of funds. So with these new dollars, we're looking to not to build any new infrastructures, and we're not looking to have ongoing costs, but to really invest in training, because training right now is the best thing someone could do when they're unemployed. Also, for that population of young people who have been disconnected, and we talk about that 40-plus percent dropout rate, the kids not receiving their high school diploma, getting them back into school, back into apprentice program, back into a training program is the best thing for them for the future. So when the economy does turn around, we would have a workforce that would be able to expand. Specifically, we get a temporary infusion, and that's what we're talking about, the money through the American Recovery Investment Act, is temporary, of $41.3 million. It's almost doubles our overall budget, but what we're gonna be able to do is train probably close to 6,000 new individuals, we'll have over 8,000 young people in subsidized employment. So it's really focused around the individuals. We did increase the allocation of our work source centers of about three and a half million dollars, in essence, to bring the base up right now, because our numbers coming through the center has gone from about 120,000 to close to 160,000 over the last 18 months. What I'd like to walk you really quickly through is our strategies, and our youth strategies, and Larry's gonna talk about the adult strategies, but our youth strategies was actually to start this spring, where we put out $2.5 million. We're the first major city in the country to implement our dollars. We seeked council approval, we put $2.5 million out, where 1,250 young people are at work today, putting that money right back in the economy. The good news about putting money in the hands of young people, we know that that money circulates very quickly, exactly. Any of us have teenagers know that, as soon as it's in their pocket, it's right back out, and that helps the local stores, the local fast food places, every place else where they spend their money. $2.5 million started May 4th. We're gonna put another $8 million out, starting July 1. And one program I would like to talk in particular is, we're gonna have $2 million in youth money, $2 million in adult money, going to that 21- to 24-year-old population, who has been disconnected from our major public institutions, which drives the police crazy many of the times, drives our social service agencies crazy, but really reach out to about 1,000 young people in that age population, who we know are not in school, who are not working. We want them to reconnect to our family, to our family, when we talk about our public institutions, back into school, back into training programs. We are actually gonna ask the faith-based community to play a lead role in making those connections back, and the reason why we wanna do that, we know these young people are just floating out there, and we want to ground them back into civic life. And that program will start in August 1st, and that would be about $4 million, 1,000 young people in subsidized employment, so that'd be the hook to get them in, and then $2 million to provide support services to approximately 600 individuals, and we think that is gonna have a major, major impact in many communities around the city. And with that, I'd like to introduce Larry Frank, who's our fearless leader here on Workforce Development from the Mayor's Office, and also go deeper on our adult strategies.
Hi. Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Morning, Councilman Smith. I can't say enough about this 21- to 24 program, for the youth program. It is really an incredibly courageous step to do the real, deep, and profound work that the city should be doing with those individual disconnected youth, and we are gonna rely heavily on a kind of a companionship role that we hope the faith-based community will be able to play with some of those young people. But it's, I'm really encouraged and kind of excited about this very deep piece of work. So if you have the eight-and-a-half-by-14, you know, breakdown, does that-
I don't have that one, do you?
Let me pass that around.
Is it, it's not in the book? Is it pulled out or something?
It's summarized in the budget, though, so it's not easy.
This is extremely helpful to-
There you go.
The adult dollars, how they're proposed to be spent, and on the backside are the youth contractors. So this does sort of delineate most of the recovery, the $43 million in recovery dollars. So if we do it by line, I think it'd be probably most helpful, but again, generally, the work that's been done by the Workforce Investment Board, which again, is 51 members, 26 business leaders, in the last three years, they've identified the sectors of the economy that are growth sectors, or will again be growth sectors, because there are no growth sectors right now, even healthcare is struggling at the moment, which is a-
Green, green economy's the only thing that's growing in the whole economy.
Yeah. So the growth sectors that have career ladders, that pay living wages, so that are good jobs, right, that are not planning on going overseas, those are the four criteria that the business community came up with to identify the sectors. Again, healthcare, logistics, transportation, hospitality, utilities, and utilities does have a green jobs, you know, component to it, energy, construction, which also has a green jobs component to it, right, security, advanced manufacturing, and then periodically have focused on financial services, entertainment, and public sector. But those are the areas of the economy that the Workforce Investment Board leadership, business leadership, has been focused on.
And that fairly well matches the city of LA's demographics of our business community.
Absolutely, absolutely. So it's, it makes sense that that's where we want to do our investment in training, right, and investment into the extent we can, and really providing the job support services to our business community. Right, so, in each of these, so now I'm gonna bring you back to the line-by-line on the programmatic expenditures. So line one is what Robert had talked about in terms of bringing some additional support dollars to the work source centers, because they are overwhelmed, so 160 separate individuals come an average of two-and-a-half times, right now, into our work source system, and so we're extremely overloaded, so it puts some additional staff capacity to handle, you know, people that are quite honestly somewhat upset, that are coming into our work source centers, so it's giving some dollars to support that.
Where are we on, and it was part of a bigger question I was gonna ask, but as long as we're talking about work source centers, with the losses we had over the past administration, how are we getting, is this amount of money, where is it gonna bring it back to? Is it gonna be back to close where it was six, seven years ago?
No, it's still about 15% to 20% less than it was four years ago. Our largest funding allocation was about six years ago, and we're still about 20% off that.
Okay, well, we've greened a lot of it, though, but not, we're not there yet, okay.
And again, you know, we have taken several million dollars off the top of the work source centers ourselves to create this innovation fund, to be able to invest in sectors, and that has proven to be incredibly successful, because we've been able to bring in at least $10 to $15 million additional outside dollars to match this innovation fund when we're doing the sector-based training programs, right? So, and this year, obviously, a fairly additional amount because of the recovery. So the second is the vocational training bridge program. So we're looking to put $4 million into developing a cohort of individuals that are gonna have skills training. So in Los Angeles, about 30% of our entire population has serious skills gaps, right? So we're developing a cohort of individuals that will be, actually be booted up to be able to take advantage of the community college training programs, so these are the bridge programs we're putting in place.
That can give them opportunity to get a degree from the institutions?
So a lot of it is certificated programs in the community colleges, but it also is different certificates, but it's also vessel programs, vocational ESL programs, it's a number of different pieces.
So they have options depending on what their career path is?
Absolutely.
Good, okay.
So the third and fourth area, we initially had them separated, but there, it's gonna be a number of RFPs that are gonna be put out by CDD, right? And so, number three is the high-growth, high-wage employment sectors, which have been identified by the WIB, right, and the fourth is developing and expanding sector initiatives, right? So there, these, these sectors of the economy, ones in which we currently have training programs, so as you know, in the last four years, we've gone from one training program to now we have nine training programs that operate within the city and our city family, in concert with the Community College District, right, in each of these areas, and I'm happy to come back at some point and go through one by one, all the, you know, successes, and also the complexities of each training program, because each one is a piece of work, right? But-
It's a body of work, not a piece of work.
Yes, exactly, yeah, exactly, a body of work.
This work is negative.
I appreciate that. So three and four are RFPs that are gonna go back out to some of the sectors where we currently have training, so healthcare, career ladders, you know, and the healthcare programs, right? We do a fair amount of work on, yeah, Transportation Opportunity Program, we do some work with Bankworks on financial services, we do some work on the Bus Driver Training Program, we do with MTA, we have training programs in construction, you know, a number of key areas where we're doing some real work, hospitality and security. Those are the ones that we currently have, that we're funding. So some will go to additionally support those training programs that are now in place and are strong, right? In addition to that, we're gonna look at some additional possibilities, so green jobs, also we do a utilities training program as well. So we have a green jobs training program that is gonna connect up to DWP, there is this talk about Plan B, right, Measure B, Plan B, right, but in addition to that, there is $600 million that came through the Community College District, Prop J, to take all the nine campuses off the grid. That $600 million, they're currently on a pathway to be able to figure out a feed-in tariff program with DWP, we've been pushing hard to get that done, that's a brilliant and great piece of work, we wanna see that move forward, but that's a fair, that's some of the first real green jobs in numbers that we're gonna have in our region. In addition to that, at DWP, for four years, we've been pushing to create this electrical pre-craft helper position, a trainee position, that actually funnels all the jobs in DWP, right? That's the other big opportunity, so be able to pipeline city residents into this electrical pre-craft helper trainee position, and then the contract jobs that are gonna come with the $600 million at the Community College District, that's the real numbers of jobs that we have in the green arena.
Are we able to move people into the union training program as well? Because they have a very good institute on this-
So-
Local 11, I think it is.
Yeah, so, so Local 11 will be the primary partner with the Community College District, and then at DWP, it's primarily gonna be in-house, at least initially, and that would be Local 18, but Local 18 is actually the ones that actually helped us figure out and approve the electrical pre-craft helper trainee, which is a pre-civil service classification for two years, to be able to get people prepped, and it's kind of like a pre-apprenticeship program.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so it's, these are all hard pieces of work, but we've been actually, believe it or not, making some headway on some of it.
And the green retrofit.
Yeah, and so then, you, you know, the legislature, I mean, the City Council ended up passing a green retrofit ordinance, so that actually, we have $37 million in Department of Energy dollars to retrofit city buildings, right? And so there's two ways to do that, one is either contracting it out, the other is to do it in-house. If we do it in-house, the strategy is working, again, with this kind of vocational worker positions that were created back in 2000, and bringing those into GSD as a pre-civil service classification, which you can do local hire on, and have those folks do the bulk of the work. And so we have a lot of grant applications to DOE, there are three big grant applications that we're not talking about here, one on healthcare, one on green jobs, and one on transportation, that we're gonna be doing from the city to the Department of Labor for the big, you know, grant pools.
With all the bad news around here, that's exciting, that's good.
We actually are, yeah, where there was, that actually have some good news-
There hasn't been much around here lately, so.
Yeah, absolutely. So that gets you through items three and four. Item five is the adult dollars that are gonna go in to support these 21- to 24-year-olds into employment and training and school, right? So that's the partnership with the $2 million in youth dollars. Youth dollars can be used now, all the way up to age 21, with these recovery dollars, so, right, 24, excuse me, so, so that's the partnership between youth and adults. Then number six, we're putting, as you see, we're putting almost $4 million into our vulnerable populations. So vulnerable populations will, are RFPing again, these particular programs, but it's dealing with homeless, we have a homeless portal down at the Volunteers America Drop-In Center, which actually has placed over 500 people, right? They're not permanent placements, some of them are temporary placements, so we have to be, you know, forthcoming about that, but it actually is, you know, does have relationships for folks to be able to get placed in employment. We wanna expand some of those homeless services. The second area we wanna focus on is veterans. We have a lot of returning veterans, if we can put a really strong program together in the city, we know we can get matching federal dollars, and we can get other dollars to come in for that piece of work, and I think all of our districts have serious interest in addressing that.
If you could do me a favor, there's a project that's, it's quite a mess, but there's a proposal to build a homeless veteran program at the Suppovate of Veterans Administration, which will house about 130 homeless veterans there. It'd be very important if you could contact them, it's new, new directions, and, what's the other name? Dora Gallo, for those who may remember Dora.
I do.
What's, I can't remember the name of her agency, but anyway, they originally applied to the city for zoning approval, our city attorney opined that we have no authority because it's federal property, and kicked it back to the feds, so it's probably gonna get built, there's a lot of community opposition, obviously, but it's probably gonna get built, because we don't have authorities on it. So I'd appreciate if you would talk to them about working with that population, because it's a perfectly identified and located group of people.
And we could do a partnership with them, they actually are doing some training programs on that campus as well, so we could actually figure out some really good partners.
Community of Friends is the name.
Yeah, Community of Friends, and Volunteers America are deeply-
And they also have a similar program at the VA Wadsworth, so.
Yes, okay.
Both of those would be a great opportunity.
Thank you. You know, the other, you know, vulnerable populations are ex-offenders, right, and, you know, we have about 20,000 ex-offenders that come back into Los Angeles City, you know, every year, and so, yeah, just from the state, you know, besides folks coming from county jail and from the federal system. So it is a profound implication for our region.
Might have a lot more after the Laker parade, did it, too?
Yeah. Or after the state budget, you know, plays out, you know?
Yeah, and there's definitely gonna be a problem.
Yeah. So, and then the workforce, the work source system enhancements, this is as we're taking inventory, we realize that, you know, upgrades on computers would be a wise investment right now with these one-time dollars, so we are gonna do that. And then, number eight, are the family source centers, so as you know, we're moving a huge piece of work, which is gonna be most difficult in August, when we get all the RFPs back, and we've got, CDD's gone through their process, right, but we're gonna have 21 family source centers that will have a single swipe card system between our work source, OneSource, and our family source system, and those family source centers are gonna be a single point, like a one-stop center, where we are investing CSBG dollars that are actually going to council today, on Friday, right, to be able to have a single application system for everybody that comes in, we're gonna wanna work with 50,000 families throughout the region, to be able to have them access EITC, low-cost auto liability, assuming we have healthy families still, SNAP programs, DWP, you know, our lifeline systems, all of the different income support systems that do exist, which many of them are largely hugely undersubscribed. I think we're probably 70% undersubscribed on our low-cost liability auto insurance that we created when we made a mandate for auto liability in the state, right, and that is something that we can, that's like putting $700 in a person's, it's only $330 right now for a low-cost liability, if you're, if you're income qualified. So we wanna be able to drive those programs through all of Los Angeles and create a system to do that, right, and we're gonna measure education success and family income. We have a bank on LA program, which we have all these banks now willing to open bank accounts for folks, we're doing that with all our summer jobs, right, so we're gonna be able to create a system to drive that. There's, line number eight is to make somewhat seamless the connection between our family source system that we're going to be out live on, on October 1st, right, in the city, and our work source, OneSource systems, right? So really, truly, if you care about families, you have to think about jobs, and if you're looking at people actually being brought back into the workforce, you have to understand there are wraparound services that need to be required in some places. So those are the, that's the program of how we're gonna try to use our recovery dollars, and I think it's a wise piece of work that the WIB has put together with CDD.
Again, anything else? Yeah, well, let me ask you a couple quick questions, we answered some of them already. Just on the, on the personnel authority side, it's a continuing resolution, there are no new positions?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. And what are we gonna do as we build up and then have to build down with ARA funds?
Well, yeah, we've been very, very worried about that, because especially with our contract providers, and so we've given them the same kind of admonition of not to build infrastructure or incur ongoing costs, this is one-time dollars. But there are three major grants that are coming out by the Department of Labor that we are leading, and at least on two of them, and one will be in partnership. One's on green, the other one's on national emergency grants, which we're gonna talk about transportation and logistics, and the third is gonna be on healthcare. So we'll probably lead on the two former, and then the latter one will be in partnership. That would also drive additional dollars to come into the system. We're also looking across the other ARA dollars, especially in Department of Energy and Department of Transportation, if there's training dollars that can be connected to it, to look beyond just this one year, and look for year two or year three funding. So we're taking our, the benefit of having additional resources right now, and really trying to lay the foundation investment to attract other resources back in. Then most of the dollars are very specific to the individuals. If we do get less dollars next year, it would mean that we would serve less individuals into the training programs or the subsidized employment. Then at the federal level, which Greg and I just returned from a major conference back in Rhode Island, that we're really advocating for the permanent appropriations side to enhance the appropriations, specifically on the summer youth piece and the dislocated training, which are two areas that we know that are not gonna go away in one year.
Right. I think we've, we all know that this is gonna last a few years in the whole economy, the report from UCLA, actually, yesterday was pretty encouraging that LA's gonna lead the country out of this mess, which we've historically done, so I'm encouraged by that, but I think we all know this is a number-year program, and I hope that Congress invests in that, there's not a one, you know, we throw a lot of money out there in ARA for one year, but we have to have ongoing programs that sustain some of this, because otherwise, you slip right back.
Right, and what we heard directly from the Secretary of Labor, as well as her key staff, is that what happens in the future years appropriations really is gonna depend on your performance here.
How good you do it now, yeah.
And everything here is performance-driven with indexes and goals, so we do a very good job on the local level of both monitoring and tracking our successes, but it's being reported right back up, the GAO has already been here looking at the first two months of our efforts coming back out, and two key indicators are gonna be how quickly we can actually move and not get stuck in bureaucracies and red tape about putting out contracts, and the second is the actual outcomes, how many people actually complete training and go into either subsidized or unsubsidized employment.
And on outcomes, when are we gonna see reports back on monitoring?
You'll see those, we're actually developing a scorecard, we already have a scorecard that you track quarterly, we'll have a scorecard as well for all of the ARA funds.
Okay, good.
In terms of the relationship between the council, the mayor, the WIB, and the department, in acknowledgement to the fact that we have to spend a lot of this money, we've put into play certain recommendations in this plan that call for notification of, of course, the elected officials as well as the WIB, whenever there are extenuating circumstances. You'll always be notified of new grants, et cetera, but we wanna give the department the actual authorization to go after grants and not burden them with always reporting to us, at least before they go after grants, but certainly after, because otherwise, they won't meet the sensitive timelines that are essential for us to be competitive.
I would just add one thing, just to flag an issue, just so you know it's coming, they've just extended the authorization for the Workforce Investment Act. How many years is this?
So it hasn't been authorized in the past six years, and, so when I first started in this position, my first meeting, I was sent out to DC to talk about reauthorization, well, six years later, we're still talking about it.
So at the moment, everybody's saying this year is gonna be focused on healthcare-
Yeah.
-but next year, the reauthorization issue and how it's structured is gonna come forward. So that's the environment, we do know that partnership is gonna be key in the, whatever, how it's reauthorized, we do know the community colleges, so we're very much ahead of the game, I think, in really figuring out the community colleges as our training, you know, partner of choice.
And I'm a big fan of the community colleges, so I think that's the right way to go.
Yeah.
My other concern, though, is looking at your, your funding sheet on the backside is the ARA money is the largest recipient, is LA Unified, which has severe challenges, no summer school, reduction of force, I'm not a big fan of LA U of D in the first place, and I think a lot of the problems you're trying to fix are because they failed in the first place, so how are they gonna utilize this huge amount of money effectively when they have huge challenges to solve internally anyway?
So this is, you know, we have a number of primary partners on our youth programs, and they have been the Catholic, the archdiocese, UCLA and LUSD, the primary reason is they actually can advance dollars-
Yeah.
...to pay, because we pay after the fact to all of our contractors, but those programs that you see, those are programs that don't necessarily, they administer the dollars, but they don't necessarily have the dollars, so we have a lot of community groups that we have comfort level with LUSD being able to administer the dollars, but we don't have the comfort level with the community group to actually be able to, so they run the program, they do the recruitment, but in addition to that, we also have our Learn and Earn program that we partner with LUSD, and so we actually do have a profound piece of work.
But Learn and Earn used to rely a lot on summer school programming, too, and that's gone, so-
That's correct.
What do you can do to replace that loss?
So they're continuing to run their summer school- So they're continuing to run their summer school programs.
For our kids.
For just our kids, really?
It's kind of a contract ed kind of environment. They know that it's in their interest to do so.
That's good. Okay, that's good to hear.
Yeah. And so the other one is the L.A. Scholars Program, which we have $2 million, because even the Community College District has gotten rid of one of theirs, of, they're only running one session instead of two sessions in the summer. So we have an L.A. Scholars Program where we actually do a partnership with the Community College District. They give them six units. Some of it's been teacher prep, some of it will be in green jobs. But after that unit, then they give them 140 hours of employment, which we pay for, the city does, for these dollars. And then if they're successful there on the teacher prep, they end up getting hired in the year-round after-school program for LUSD.
So you're taking them out of the classroom and putting them in a work environment rather than the classroom?
Yeah. But it's a kind of a summer bridge program to get them to next year to get into community college and have a half-time income while they're going to community college. And those, that L.A. Scholars Program is for our high school graduates. So each one of the summer youth programs is targeted towards a particular population. But I think those dollars, I think, are secure, and we have, feel good about partnership. I know it's not as great to have kids on a campus. You want them to have the life of the campus around them, so the session that they're not, they're going to be there where it's not happening, it's going to be not as exciting to be there during that time, but I think that's the only downside.
Okay. And then the final...
I'll just add to that. 75% of those dollars go directly to the kids or payroll costs, so, and we limit the admin to less than 10%.
Very good. And then the final question is, I know it's, and not to be a homer here, but UCLA is on here. When you talk about healthcare, one of the biggest providers of healthcare is USC, and of course, our county hospital, and the two hospitals they just bought. So why aren't they not a component of the healthcare portion of this?
We knew we'd get stuck in the battle between the Trojans and the Bruins.
Not a good place to be in this town.
Actually, yeah, yeah. Actually, if you notice, the deputy mayor was mentioning, most of the processes we have for the allocation of funds, they are open for competition. We've been in dialogue with USC to get more engaged in our processes and actually contact some of the workforce centers, so they can compete for some of those programs, specifically the sector initiatives in healthcare, et cetera. We're hoping they'll submit an application.
And quite honestly, if you're looking at the two major suppliers of healthcare, it's Kaiser and it's the county, and we're probably, that's, I would say, if I were to predict, that's the proposal that we're going to put in jointly with them on, to the Department of Labor for the big $500 million grant pool.
All right. So as long as you're in discussion with them, it's up to them whether they want to play or not. But it's the largest provider, as you said, it's the county, USC, and so, all right. Very good. Exciting. I understand you have some language that you're debating with the city attorney here.
Yeah, just I and L. And that's what Greg mentioned earlier, that we agreed that we would notify the WIB of any contracts under 250 rather than approval. And the WIB Leo actually gives us that authority, which was a separate document signed between our department, the WIB, and the mayor's office, and city council. So we just want to be true to the WIB Leo, and that we will notify the WIB of anything that happens under 250,000. Above 250,000, we do get WIB and council approval.
Yeah, for all intents and purposes, notification achieves the objective of approval. The problem that I have is I can't call, the folks on the WIB, the 50-some-odd members, of course, they're private citizens, they've got their own lives. I can't get them convened in time to always approve these issues, and we've got a schedule. So what we're saying is notification, and through notification, you in essence get approval.
Okay. So you have the specific language you wanted?
It was just as one word on the two sections.
Should say notification.
Just should say WIB notification rather than WIB.
And that is in section?
Of I and L.
I and L.
Yeah, and if we could get that reflected.
Give that to the clerk, and we'll send that forward then to the committee. If the city attorney has any issues there, they can bring it up to the next committee, which is Friday? Friday, very good. And council on Friday also?
Yes.
You have a say. Give me a long day Friday. I better cancel my vacation. All right. Thank you very much. With that, this committee chair will recommend the approval of the report as stated with the following actions that were identified, and send it forward to the next committee for approval. And I thank you very much. It's very exciting to see that we have really taken a lot of programs we used to have out there in the city and brought great synergy to them to meet the demands of the challenging economy. So I thank you very much for your hard work. Good luck.
Thank you.
And then we'll speak to the committee on an item not on today's agenda. Seeing none, the meeting is adjourned.